So I'd like to call the meeting to order if we could have a moment of silence and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adam Clark, can we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Jamie Gerardi.
Here.
Mr. Gary Montles.
Here.
Mr. Pierre Hanzel.
Here.
Mr. John Woody.
Here.
Mr. Christopher Foole.
Here.
Mr. Chris Williams.
Here.
And Chairman Charles Craig.
Here.
And proof of publication?
The items were advertised in the Tamboise on October 18th, 2023, November 1st, 2023, November 22nd, 2023, and December 20th, 2023, whereby affidavit of certified mail is sent.
All right, thank you very much. We have a motion to approve the minutes that's submitted.
Motion to approve the minutes from the October 5th meeting.
A second. I saw there was one reference in there to Peter leaving and not coming back, but then it showed where he made a motion or something somewhere in there, so I think that needs to be looked at. But other than that.
Okay. Well, we have a motion and a second, further discussion? The discussion is that there is a question about Peter's location. Peter, were you here?
I was not. I left the meeting and to the best of my knowledge, I never returned.
Okay.
And there was a comment in the minutes about that, but then a little further down it mentioned Peter saying or doing or making a motion or something, so unless those items were out of order or something, I don't know. Anyway, take a look at that.
Yeah, so I'll amend the motion just to have that looked at?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll still second that.
Motion and a second? Any further discussion? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Okay. I'd like to welcome everybody. Let's start by swearing in. If anybody plans to give testimony today, would you please rise and raise your right hand? Be sworn.
Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give because I'm sure yourself you got it?
All right, thank you. So again, I'd like to welcome everybody today to welcome to the new year. Planning Commission is appointed by the Board of County Commissioners and we meet twice monthly. We serve as a local planning agency and we hold public hearings and transmit to the Board of County Commissioners recommendations on comprehensive plan amendments, land development code amendments, and rezoning and conditional use requests. Planning Commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance requests, and certain alternative standard requests. However, final decisions may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. Anyone who's in opposition to any development code amendment, any rezoning, conditional use, or any item where the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, be important for you to attend that Board of County Commission meeting. We have those dates available if you don't have them. Those of you who are not familiar with the format of the meetings, we have three sections. We have continuances, we have consent, and we have regular items. With regard to continuances, we're accustomed to approve a continuance request from the staff or the applicant if they have a valid reason. And the consent items are items where they're on the agenda, but we have not received any concerns or notations from the public or the staff. Those items will go through one at a time. If there's something on consent that you'd like to have heard, please raise your hand when we call it out and we'll have a poll from consent. Otherwise, it'll remain on consent and they'll all be voted on at one time. Any items that were on consent that were taken off consent will go onto the regular items. That's the third item, and those items will be fully heard and vetted here today. The applicants will be limited to three minutes to make their presentation and the public will have three minutes to come up and ask questions or make comments about the application. And then following that, the applicant will have an opportunity to come up and respond to those concerns or comments. If there's been a request, and I don't think there has been, I think there was one, right?
There was one request, Mr. Chair.
It must be in writing at least 24 hours before this meeting. I think we had one for an extra 10 minutes. So before we start the meeting, do you want to open the public comment on anything that's not on today's agenda? So if you're here to speak on something that is not on the agenda, this will be your opportunity to come up and ask questions or make your comments. Is there anybody here for that purpose? Seen no one? So if you would please, any of you, and I'm sure it's most of you who have cell phones, please put them on the silent position. Check and make sure they're on the silent position so they won't interrupt anybody as they're speaking. And with that, I think we're ready to go. Denise, if you're ready?
Ready, Mr. Chair. Happy New Year. Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. I do want to say that for the record, we did have someone signed up to speak on WebEx, but that person is not online. But I just wanted the record to reflect that because I know that some of the documents I've sent out do state that someone was signed up to speak. The first item we're going to start with is PC-2, which is PDD 247744. It's a zoning amendment in the name of DeWuud Hanny and Nima Todd Ermine. The request is to continue the item. It's a staff request to the February 8th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting at 1:30 and date city.
To what date was that again? I'm sorry.
February 8th, 2024, 1:30, date city.
All right. Is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? Seen no one? Do you have any more continuances?
Yes, we have several.
Okay.
Following item is PC-3, PDD 247711. It's a zoning amendment, next Metro IDS Corbett MPUD. The request is to continue the item to a date uncertain.
Okay. The applicant present?
The applicant is virtually present.
All right. The applicant like to make a comment?
The applicant is Ms. Will Height. I'm not sure if you want to. I think you've asked if the applicant wants to make a comment.
Is there anyone here to object? Seen no one? So we'll go ahead.
Following item is PC-4, PDD 247737. It's a zoning amendment, Orange State MPUD Master Plan Unit Development. The request is to continue the item to the January 18th, 24 Planning Commission meeting at 1:30 in Newport Ritchie.
All right, is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? Okay, seen no one?
Following is PC-5, PDD 247639. It's a zoning amendment in the name of Timber Ridge MPUD Master Plan Unit Development, Timber Ridge Realty, Date City LLC. The request is to continue the item to the February 8th, 24 Planning Commission meeting at 1:30 in Date City.
All right, is that up? The president? Anyone here to object? Okay.
Following item is PDD 240060. On this item, you will be sitting as the local planning agency. It's CPAS 2233, next Metro Corbett IDS property. The request is to continue the item to a date uncertain. And that is the end of your continuance request.
Okay, is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? Do you have a motion?
Mr. Chair, motion to continue to PC-2 to 2824, Date City. PC-3, date uncertain. PC-4, 118, Newport Ritchie. PC-5, 28, Date City. And PC-6, date uncertain.
Second.
Two seconds.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign?
Great, so we're going to move on to item PC-7. That's PDD 247655. Clinton Avenue MPUD Master Plan Unit Development, CC Waller Vocable Trust. It's for a rezoning from an AR agricultural residential, R2 low-density residential, and an R1MH, single-family mobile home district, to an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District in order to allow for maximum development of 399 single-family detached units and townhomes. These will all be platted. I know that in your packet, it says that there will be multifamily apartment units, and that's because they did a traffic study based on that, but that is not what they're proposing at all, nor are they proposing to loom any of that information. And it comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet.
All right. The applicant present? Anyone here to object? Seen no one? Okay, next.
Following item is PC-8, PDD 247761, J.I. Pirana LLC. It's for a change in zoning from a C2 general commercial district to an I1 light industrial park district with a voluntarily agreed upon deed restriction that limits the uses to the I1 light industrial park district uses. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval.
Okay. The applicant present? Anyone here to object? Seen no one?
Following item is PC-9, PDD 247751. It's a zoning amendment in the names of Thomas J. Ambrose II and Jennifer Rae McNeil. It's for a change in zoning from an AR agricultural residential, R1 rural density residential, and R2 low-density residential district to an MF1 multiple-family medium-density district with deed restrictions as included in your findings. That specific has architectural features, limiting the number of units to 42 townhomes on the property. They're going to be platted, so on and so forth, as included in your finding effect number two. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval.
All right, is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? Okay. Next.
Following item is PC-10, PDD 247757. This is a special exception. The names of Brian Post, Carrie Matthew, Townsend Road Industrial. It's for a freestanding recreational vehicle and boat storage in an I1 light industrial park district just so happens to be enclosed. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet.
All right, is the applicant present? Anyone here to object?
Following item is PC-11, PDD 240065. This is a comprehensive plan amendment. You're sitting as a local planning agency on this matter. CPA 2310, Grace and Truth ELAM. It's for a comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map 2-15 and Sheet 5 from Res 1 and AGR to Con conservation lands on approximately 318 acres of property located north of 52 and between the Suncoast Parkway and US 41. This is as a result of an environmental lands acquisition and management program acquisition of property. So it comes to you with that you find it consistent with the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan and recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners.
All right, is there anybody here to comment on this? Okay.
And that is the end of your consent agenda.
We have somebody that's commenting on that one.
Oh, you do, okay.
So I'll pull that one.
We will pull PC-11. I think they have to go on the consent agenda first and then you comment.
Okay. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda as modified?
So move.
I know in PC-7, we had a letter that came in. To, it was an deposition. I don't know if that's.
Yeah, any about that?
You had opposition on PC-7?
No, I thought the letter was on 12. Or unless I missed it, there might be one on.
Was it on 12?
I think there was one on 7, too.
Oh, is there?
Yes, there was an email that came in.
It was an email, I think, that came in last night or the night before.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Tuesday night.
So you're pulling PC-7.
It looks like it was just to the planning board members.
Okay.
I think we should hear it just so we can address the objections in the.
Do you need a copy of it, Denise, of the email?
Um, I would love to see that, yeah, absolutely, so that we can provide it to the clerk's office as an ex-party communication.
When did it come?
It actually came in Tuesday at 9 o'clock, and I mean, the person's not even here, so I don't even know. What's the? I don't know what the protocol is, but.
Yeah, that's what I wondered, too.
Well.
If one of you would forward the email to me, that would be fabulous. Thank you. I think the Planning Commission's going to make that determination.
Yeah, is it some kind of lengthy letter?
Yeah, it's like. What was the comment?
There are seven or eight questions.
Seven or eight.
I mean, that's really what it comes down to. I mean, they asked about public noticing. They asked about the things you just mentioned about apartments versus townhomes.
And I believe we may have answers to that because I believe Mr. Vermillion may have. That letter, he may have responded to that person.
Yeah, unfortunately, it doesn't look like any county staff was copied on it, so.
Okay, Mr. Vermillion? You want to comment?
I have one quick question, Mr. Chairman, just for point of clarification. He may be able to answer all these and it may be a moot point anyway, but if there's no one here actually objecting to it, then I don't feel it should come off a consent agenda, even if someone sent it.
Yeah, I haven't taken it off consent.
Okay, okay, I just, I don't even know what's in the email. I haven't seen it.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we addressed the letter was sent, that's all. Can you have a copy of this?
Yeah, here's the.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a? We have a copy here. I think that at least one member of the board did have an opportunity to read this. I think the attorney should be given a copy so that he understands what's in here for. We have an opportunity to get it. So if I could, as a point of order, recommend that he have this copy as it is the only copy that's available to us.
That's not the only email.
To at least address the concerns in it.
Regardless, you need to make a motion on what you're doing with your consent agenda.
Right.
So either you decide PC-7 is on there or not. You just need to make a decision.
Please, Mr. Chairman, just again, I know I'm out of order and I apologize. What I would prefer to do, if you all are okay with, since the person's not here and I don't even have an opportunity to cross-examine the person, as I'm entitled to do, is to leave it on consent. Someone provide me the email and I will work with staff to respond to the person's questions. I think that's the only proper thing to do.
Do appear all to be posed as questions, not necessarily objections.
Right.
Yeah, in that case, I agree with what you just suggested. And I think that's a good suggestion. I'd like to, I mean, my preference would be to leave it on consent since they're really just posing questions and you can respond to them.
We're happy to do so.
Okay?
Thank you.
So if that's the pleasure of the board, whatever is the pleasure of the board, I'd like to hear a motion.
Is there a motion? There's not a motion.
Was there a motion on the floor?
I did, I made a motion.
Did you?
Yep.
To approve the.
And will you have a second?
So the consent agenda, just so we're clear, is P-7, P-8, P-9, and P-10.
Yes, right.
Correct.
Okay.
I'll second.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Okay, motion carries. And we're putting PC-11 on the regular items. Okay.
Does the Planning Commission want a presentation or should we just take the question from the?
Let's take the questions and then we can respond.
I had a question, too.
Okay, as soon as they, as soon as everybody clears out and we can get the noise down.
Wes, did you say you had a question?
I had a question. On 11? Yes, okay. I'm opposed to, I just had a question.
Yeah. All right, welcome. If we could have your name and address, please?
My name is Jeffrey Ballantyne, 17241 Forge Drive. That's in Springville. That's in the area of the land conservation. I live right across the street from it.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just curious to what we're calling land conservation. Is it going to be accessed by the public or is it going to be locked off to everybody? Because it impacts not just me. These people, there's several residents that are right on that zone where it's across the street from us. That's just my question. How are we going to? As conservation, is it going to be locked off for the animals or are people going to be able to roam it? Ride four-wheelers, ATVs? I don't know.
Is this a purchase of the development rights?
Um, we do have Jackie Jordan on for this particular item. She's on WebEx and she might be able to answer those questions and she can explain that the property was purchased through the environmental lands acquisition and management program. So it's now owned by Pasco County. There you go. Oh, you're here.
Okay, if you don't mind. Excuse me, I'm sorry. We can't have any conversations that aren't on the microphone because we have to record it all.
Sir.
But before you step down and before you step up, let's, is there anybody else that's going to speak? All right, well, are you finished?
I'm done, yes.
Okay, then let's have you.
Sir, there's no for now. You get one chance.
I'm done.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Just want to make sure.
Robin Gibson, 17259 Forge Drive. My question is, I've been searching, I've read all about the acquisition, but I've been searching for the boundaries of this to be exact. What exactly how far? We found a couple of places like, okay, who owns that? Well, now the county owns it, but it's real, is it included in this? And then it said on there, Phase 2. Is that something in like additional land Phase 2? Or is it like the second step in being processing? Now we're going to do this next step is that Phase 2. So I was unclear. I was trying to find, you know, a map that clearly showed what we were referring to and there's several out there.
Okay, here's the map, but we're going to speak to that, so.
Okay.
Do you have any questions about that map?
Um, I have to, I would have to, I don't know if I'm allowed to take a picture of it with my cellphone.
Sure.
Kind of expand it and look at it. I've seen this, but with the colors, is it just the red? And I need to look at it up close to see.
Okay, well, you're welcome to take a picture.
Thank you.
If you like. Okay, so you've heard the questions. Would you please address those concerns?
Sure. Hi, good afternoon. My name is Tammy Odierna and I am the Program Manager in Parks, Rec, and Natural Resources. So I'm here on behalf of Melissa Charbonneau today, who normally would be speaking to this project. But basically, if you look at the map, everything in red is what ELAM has acquired. So it is more than 318 acres. This specific comprehensive amendment is just for the 318 acres. So the idea is, we have a grant for the Florida Communities Trust and in order to be in compliance with that grant, we need to change the land use to conservation. To answer this gentleman's question about what would go there, FCT is going to give us half of the money that we used in order to purchase this property if we then put on walking paths and passive uses to this property, which is in line with what ELAM does. When we purchase conservation acreage, more likely than not, the idea is to then have passive recreation there for the residents and nearby citizens. So if you look at the.
That would not include four-wheelers.
No, that would definitely not include four-wheelers.
How would, how would folks access those trails? I think the concern is, is that going to create traffic on their street or their neighborhood?
Right, right. So we're not at that stage yet. We're at the stage where we're designing what would go there. I would imagine we go out to do anything. We would have like a neighborhood meeting to determine how that would be. But of course, like I said, it will be passive in nature. I would imagine there would probably be a small parking lot, probably similar to some of the other preserves that we have in the county. It would still be a preserve. Just to be noted, this entire swath of land, including the 317 acres, it adjoins to 1,800 acres that are all conservation and purpose. So all of this land would be very low-impact, low-use.
Okay.
I'm Tammy King. I live at 17241 Forge Drive. My question would be, if you're going to put a parking lot, where would you put it? And right now, part of the red, there are, somebody has livestock on it. Is the livestock going to stay there? Will the livestock be moved? And walking paths, I mean, where is all this going to go right now? Because it's one-way in, it's a dead-end road. We live on the dead end and we already have trespassers, fence dumper, mushroomers. So how are we going to stop the traffic and the cars and the walking? How are you going to, are you going to put higher fences? Is that what you're going to do to protect our property that's been there for 30 years to make walking paths? That's my question. Where are you going to put these parking lots and things?
Sure. So unfortunately, I don't have a map which would show our conceptual design. As of right now, it's conceptual. But in terms of the catalyst, what we normally do with conservation.
But in terms of the cattle lease, what we normally do with conservation land is we have cattle leases on there and two, we end up doing something with the land. It helps us with management. So to answer your question, we would most likely take the cattle lease off when we're ready to put anything there. But again, it's, it's a conceptual idea, again, to agree to move it to conservation, which is less impactful than what the current use is, honestly. I don't know if that really answered your question too much. What I can do, if you'd like, more than happy to send you an email or give you a map of the conceptual plan. That way you can have a better look at it and we can talk about it offline too. Sure.
Yeah, yeah, just, yeah, we're not having conversations here, but I understand.
I can probably explain that. Currently, the future land use of this property is rez one and AGR. That would allow for residential development and agricultural development on this property, which would likely generate more traffic, more intensity than conservation would. I think that was what she was trying to explain. I understand that currently there's nothing on it, but the land use currently allows housing at one unit per acre or what does AGR allow?
One per five.
Okay, so currently, the future land use would allow this to be developed as residential housing. That's what she means by less intense.
Okay.
No, sorry.
How is the other, is the other red that you own currently that you're integrating this into, is that currently accessed? Is there parking for that or is it all kind of still part of that master plan that's?
It's all kind of part of that master plan. So right now, there's no public access there. In the future, we're hoping to have this become like a jewel of a conservation piece with all of that, including Cruz Lake, which you see in the purple.
Well.
Or actually, it's in, I'm sorry, it's further south.
So there would be, there'd be a commitment on the county's part to keep in touch with these, these people that live in that area, to work with them and make sure they know what your plan is and that you get their input.
Absolutely.
Okay, because I think that's important. They're, they're, that's their community and obviously they have a, they have a right and a need to know what's going on there, so, and to give you input.
Definitely.
Okay.
Tammy.
Thank you. If you would give them your contact information before you leave today. All right. Thank you.
Tammy, before you go anywhere, sorry, I have a question. Denise, can you put up one of the subsequent maps, the one that's dark green showing what's conservation, what's going to conservation? I saw it in the. Uh, one more. Yeah. So my question, Tammy, is, so the, the kind of yellowish swath between the two dark greens, that's owned by the county too as well, right? So how come, I was just curious why that isn't being conservation as well? Obviously, you haven't answered.
Yeah, that's a good question. So I think eventually it will go that way. The reason for this amendment in particular is because it's tied to our FCT grant. So we wanted to bring it forward so we could get moving with that grant in order to get reimbursed for the cost of that acquisition in particular.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there no other questions? Okay. Your motion?
Motion to approve. I'll second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Thank you all for coming. I'm glad you had a help today. Okay, I think we got one more. Trouble, we've got trouble coming down.
Troublemaker, huh?
Yeah.
Liam Devine, Planning Development. Happy New Years. This is item P twelve. Before I begin, I do want to note that there was an update to attachment nine. That was for the affidavit. It was not notarized. A notarized copy has been sent to the court's office. Item PDD twenty-four dash seven seven five eight in the name of Carlton E. N. Elise Ellison. It is a Euclidian zoning amendment from AR Agricultural Residential District to C two General Commercial District with a future land use classification of comm commercial under the comprehensive plan. There was a comp plan amendment back in August, August eighth of twenty twenty-three of that change from rez six to comm commercial. The proposal is to develop the property with a maximum of one hundred and ten thousand square feet self-storage facility in conformance with the C two General Commercial District standards. And the subject site is located on the south side of Curly Road, approximately eight hundred and fifty feet northeast of the intersection of Curly Road and State Road fifty-four. The subject site is located in the South Market area and is located in the urban service area and is outside of the rural areas. Here is a context map of some of the MPUDs in the area and then BOPH, which is that blue in the top right. Here's an aerial view. Here is a closer aerial view. The surrounding future land use to the northeast and south is all rez six, to the west is comm commercial and rez six. The surrounding zoning to the north is AR and MPUD, it's the Pine Ridge MPUD, to the east is AC, to the south is AR and to the west is AR. The subject site consists of a single-family dwelling and approximately four point four two three acres. On October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, the applicant held a neighborhood meeting and this is coming with a voluntary grid upon deed restriction as provided in your agenda packet. And this is coming with a recommendation of approval from PDD staff. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? All right, is the applicant present? Is anyone here to object?
Sorry?
I was asking if there's anyone here to object, anything, or speak, okay?
And for the record, Kevin Reali, four oh one East Jackson Street in Tampa. And to the chairman's question, we have a presentation prepared and we asked for some more time. But in the absence of opposition here, if there's no one online, we're really just here to answer questions. The history here as to why there were questions is, if you all remember, the future land use application change for this property included properties to the west and there were subsequent, not applications, but submissions to staff for pre-absent things to develop that with a more intense use. We had our neighborhood meeting and we explained that this is, this is not what that is. This is just a portion of that future land use map change. So with the pleasure of the commission, we have a presentation, but otherwise, if there are no questions, we'll, we'll just stand by.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, if not, then.
So Liam, this was on regular because of what happened with the future land use amendment? Not because of?
Yeah, no, this was on regular is because staff received a letter of opposition that usually triggers us to put an item on regular that was provided in your agenda packet and is one of your attachments.
Sure. All right. What's the substance of the letter, Liam? Can you just summarize it quickly?
Ooh, I don't have the letter in front of me, so I don't want to misquote it, but if you give me a second, I can pull it up and we can refresh my memory and I can provide that.
I have it here. Writing to as a concerned resident and then to the Pine Ridge community. It's increased traffic on Curly Road. The traffic uses Curly Road is predominantly residential. This property is directly behind my home. It's going to impact my property value. There's going to be noise behind my house. The areas still consist of trees and nature. Nobody wants to view from the roof of the storage building. There's already a storage facility across the street on fifty-four. I'm concerned about the impact on my privacy as a result of people actually in the site and they don't see how there's a vital need for another storage unit.
Okay. All right. Anything from the DIAS?
Just a comment because this recently happened in my neighborhood with a climate-controlled self-storage. Please don't cut off a neighborhood's access to provide a directionalized access into a climate-controlled storage. That's happened to my neighborhood and unfortunately, that's a decision of the Florida DOT and the F and FDOT isn't for Florida at this time, but we really didn't appreciate that. We can't make a left turn out of our neighborhood so that a climate control can have its own channelized access, left turn in for all of the, the whole purpose of these things and then of this is that, you know, it's going to generate less than fifty peak hour driveway trips, so I'm not understanding why a climate-controlled storage would need its own access at the expense of a neighborhood's access. But I hope that doesn't happen here, just a comment. I'm not opposed to this project.
Okay, anything else?
What kind of, is there any plans for buffering or any kind of site, sightline abatement or what's, what's the, you know, what, do you have a concept plan for?
So we do have a concept plan. I don't know if we printed out this, Cynthia, do you have a printout? So the, the code already requires a pretty significant setback and the FAR is relatively low at point six, so it's only going to be a two-story facility. And so the combination of the setback and the limited height, we think is a significant buffer and there's going to be a buffer requirement in the code along Curly Road. Additionally, the, the opposition letter, we checked the dates on that and that was the same date of our, of our neighborhood meeting and given that, that, that person isn't here today, when we talked through all of these things, a lot of the conversation at that meeting had to do with, like I said, the, the use that was in for a pre-app to the, to the west. And then the other questions were, you know, will it be windows? The code requires windows, but the, the facility will likely have like a glossing on the windows because that's more for, for architectural look than it is for function. Another concern was hours. This is not going to be a twenty-four, seven facility. It will close in the night, so it's low-traffic generating, low noise, low impact in that respect. And then there were questions about drainage, but the, the topography of the site is such that actually flows away from the neighborhood. So the site will have its swift flood requirements, of course, but additionally, it would flow away from the neighborhood anyway, even without that type of improvement. So those are the things that we addressed at the meeting and I, I'm taking from that person not being here today that the meeting satisfied their questions. I can't speak for them, but that's, you know, that's for the commission to decide.
All right.
Yeah, I talked about it.
Okay. Any other questions?
And the deed restriction is regarding live local?
Live local and trip cap because of the time, exemption from timing and phasing.
Okay.
Because, you know, as stated, this is a low-traffic generator.
Okay, your motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion with the motion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Okay, motion carries. Uh, we have a presentation on utilities.
I think that's our cue.
That's your cue. That's right.
Good afternoon, Chair, Chairman Ray and.
Thank you.
Planning Commission members. My name is David Allen. I'm the Director of Utilities for Pasco County. And before I turn the, the mic over to Mr. Adolfo Gonzalez, who's our Utilities Engineering Director, I just want to first thank you for giving us the opportunity to present to you this afternoon. I think that, you know, we work in very close partnership with the Planning and Development Staff at Pasco County and most of our efforts are really behind the scenes in terms of providing feedback, comment, and support on proposed development projects. And, you know, as such, one of the things that we don't do, because we're a service provider, we don't want to take formal positions on whether or not we oppose or support specific projects. And instead, what we do is we look at projects, evaluate them to make a determination as to whether or not we can serve those areas, those projects. And then if we can't, identify what's needed then to support development in those areas. And so Mr. Gonzalez is, is in charge of our Utilities Engineering and Project Management Group. And some of the main functions there include a, a planning function where we have a team of people that are continually looking at these development projects and evaluating them using hydraulic models of our, our various systems, our water sewer and reclaim system. And also identifying the scope, if you will, of future capital projects and future improvements that are needed to support the, the customers that are, that are anticipated to join the utility service area. His team also has what's called a, we call it a project delivery team. And what they do is they review the development plans that come in and provide comments at more at the site approval stage. And then we also have our own technical staff of inspectors that go out and inspect those facilities as they're being built for final acceptance before those facilities are turned over to us for acceptance and then, and then ongoing operation and maintenance at that point. And then finally, the other main area that he's responsible for in, in the engineering group is, is planning, designing, and delivering major capital improvement projects. So one of the big ones that we have underway right now is the southeast expansion of our southeast wastewater treatment plant, which is off of Hancock Road, a little bit to the south here. And we're, we're actually doubling the capacity of that facility and we're going from a three million gallon per day capacity to a six million gallon day capacity. So what I'd like to just kind of close with, and I hope that the key takeaways for each of you in terms of our presentation are really just getting kind of an understanding of what our role is, particularly as it comes to planning and evaluating future projects. Also, understanding really the difference between capacity, you know, system capacity and system expansion and growth, if you will, or extensions is what we call them. And then lastly, some of the, kind of the constraints and where we really interject ourselves in the process when it comes to capacity reservation for projects. Because there's various, you know, certainly various planning stages that go on from comp plan approval, zoning amendments, those types of things, but we don't always commit capacity at those specific phases because quite honestly, we don't know if those projects are really coming to fruition. A lot of times, it's just the initial phase of that. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Gonzalez and again, thanks for giving us the opportunity to present this afternoon.
Thank you. Thank you very much, David.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Board Members. I'm Adolfo Gonzalez. I'm the Utilities Engineering and Contract Management Director for the county. As David mentioned, our engineers and permitting specialists and inspectors provide feedback and review to the Planning and Development Department through all phases of zoning reviews down all the way through a construction drawing review. This afternoon, I'd like to show you what our water and wastewater system looks like, explain how we plan for capacity in our system, and then also provide some information as to how we come up with our utility statements that you see in your packages. Pasco County has several public and private water and wastewater utility providers. The largest ones are shown in this graphic and they include the cities of Dade City, Sepia Hills, Newport Ritchie, as well as Florida Governmental Utilities Authority, which has several service areas throughout the county. But by far, the largest utility provider in the county is Pasco County. We cover approximately five hundred square miles and currently serve over one hundred and twenty-six thousand customers in our service area. Our portable water system is made up of a large distribution and transmission main network spread out throughout the county and it includes interconnections with four Tampa Bay Water points of, of interconnect. The Tampa Bay Water supplies approximately ninety-three percent of all the portable water that the county provides its customers. The other seven percent comes from a series of isolated and connected groundwater wells that we own and operate throughout the county. The total water use in twenty twenty-two is around thirty-four million gallons per day. That's an average use. The current permitted capacity for Pasco County between Tampa Bay Water and our wells is all seventy-eight million gallons per day. On the wastewater side, we operate six wastewater treatment facilities. Five of them are considered regional plants. Those plants have a permitted capacity of thirty-three million gallons per day. Our current wastewater flows are around twenty-six million gallons per day. We have quite an extensive network of force mains, over a thousand miles of force mains, over seven hundred pump stations, and over six hundred miles of gravity sewer mains throughout the county that collect and convey that, those flows to the wastewater plants. All the treated wastewater, which is converted to reclaimed water, reused water, is diverted to beneficial use, either. to beneficial use, either directly to customers or to infiltration basins throughout the county. On the reclaimed water side, our transmission network is fairly extensive. Again, as I mentioned, about 90% of the water is used for beneficial use by our retail and bulk customers. The rest goes to infiltration basins or projects such as our 4G wetlands project just north of Sable 52, where we use to, it was, it was a double win. We created or enhanced existing wetlands on the site and use it to treat any excess wastewater, reclaimed water that we have from the plants. With respect to planning for future growth, there are several regulations that we have to comply with, either state or regional regulations. On the regional side, we coordinate closely with the Southwest Florida Water Management District with respect to their 10-year water supply facilities plan. The district is charged with identifying water sources and alternative water sources to meet existing and future demands within the district's boundaries. We also coordinate with Tampa Bay Water as one of the six member agencies of Tampa Bay Water to develop their 20-year long-term master plan. It's a 20-year look ahead, but they update those every five years based on consumption data that we provide them on an annual basis, as well as all the other member agencies. The last time the plan was updated was this year. They finalized it in 2023, and they're now looking at implementing a future project expansions. And I'll show you that in a couple of more slides. On the wastewater side, the primary regulation that we comply with is Chapter 62, 600 Florida Administrative Code. That requires each utility to plan well in advance of when demand is projected to exceed capacity so that that wastewater plant will be there in time to receive the additional flows. In our case, in the case of the regulations, the, the planning starts five years ahead of when that projected demand intersects the capacity curve. But in our case, we back up one additional year and we start planning those activities six years in advance of when we think capacity will be exceeded. And how do we, oh, in addition to that, I apologize, let me go back. In addition to Chapter 62, 600, there are other regulations such as House Bill 53, which requires us to document the condition, the level of service and the service life remaining of our infrastructure. So there, there are many ways that we have to plan at either short term or long term to make sure that we have the plant capacity available and the water supply available to serve our customers. All that is based on master plans that we develop and update every once in a while. The last master plans that were updated for the county on the water, wastewater and reclaimed water side were prepared in 2019. Those plans focus primarily on plant expansion. The plans that we are currently starting to work on to update this year for water reclaim and wastewater will also include a potential backbone transmission main network for a build-out scenario for the county. But those plans have a very specific descriptions of key parameters such as population projections, flow demands, land uses, that govern how we plan for primarily plant infrastructure. And the, the primary driver of that is development growth. But then there is also other drivers such as regulatory compliance, safety and security regulations we also have to abide by, and renewal and replacement of existing infrastructure. All that, along with any contractual obligations the county might have, those are all factored into our master plan. Developers then use our master plan as, to inform them when they're developing their project-specific master utility plans for development. And depending on the complexity of the development, the magnitude of the development, if there are multiple developers involved with it, they may go one step further and create these focused area master plans, such as what the villages of Pasadena Hills did for the county, what Connected Cities has done as well, that has the backbone water and sewer networks needed for all the phases of their development. With respect to water supply demand projections, we work with Tampa Bay Water to give them data on an annual basis, that's then updated globally every five years, to determine what specific water supply projects they have to implement on our behalf, at our cost, to make sure that that water supply is available before the demand exceeds the available capacity. In this case, if you notice on the, the screen there, the red dash line is the existing capacity of Tampa Bay Water's system. And the next expansion is scheduled to be online by 2028 to provide enough capacity to meet the needs of all six member agencies, including Pasco County. On the wastewater side, that's more of a local approach that we take to identifying when a wastewater plant needs to be expanded. And it goes back to that Chapter 62, 600, where we start planning six years in advance of when a, a, a projected demand is expected to exceed the available capacity. What we do is, on a monthly basis, we track wastewater flows coming into each of our plants. We couple that with population projection data, and we multiply the two together, use some factors for growth and demand per household, and once, and then we project that forward in time using some, some escalation factors. Once we identify, either based on a medium level population projection or a high level population assumption, we then back up six years from that and decide when to start planning the next plant expansion. In the case of our facilities, we use the median population projection trend when planning the next plant expansion. And those population projection trends are based on data we receive from the University of Florida Bureau of Economic and Business Research. They provide this data to us on an annual basis. As you can see, the, the median projection for the next 30 years is a 37% growth, and it could be as high as 70% growth. And what we do is we track both of those and incorporate enough projects within our five-year capital improvement plan to account for plant expansions and any additional pipelines or, or system infrastructure needed to provide operational flexibility to move flows from one side of the county to the other, from one plant to the other. That's the extent of our capital improvement plan, which is plant expansions and limited infrastructure expansion to provide that operational flexibility. It does not include extensions of transmission mains beyond our current network.
Can I stop you and ask you a question on, go back to the slide? So, did you say you're using medium currently?
Excuse me?
Are you using medium projections?
Yes.
So, can you explain why you're using medium? And because everything I've heard from the Planning Department and our MPO is that we're closer to medium, high, or high. So I'm not sure why you're using a lower population projection than what our Planning Department and MPO are using.
We use a medium because it's tracking closer to actual flows that we are getting at the plants. When you look at any one of those particular plant flows, the black line is the actual flow, and I believe the orange line is the median projection, median population projection. That's the only reason why we're using that one. It seems to track better than the high projection. In the case that we, let's say we were getting close to nearing plant capacity at a particular plant, we have other projects in place, that was that operational flexibility that I mentioned, to include pipelines that move flows from one plant to the other until such time that we can then design and construct the plant capacity needed at that particular plant. That's what's happening right now at the southeast wastewater plant, where we're diverting some flows to the Wesley Center plant until such time that the plant, the additional 3 million gallons per day expansion comes online.
So I guess maybe my question is for the Planning Department, then if, if you're seeing that our actual flows are evidencing a medium population projection, why, I guess, why, why is our Planning Department wanting to use high? I mean, I'm understanding that our whole planning for growth in the future for roads and, you know, what the Planning Department uses is based on high.
Maybe people aren't using the amount of water that the utility department hopefully conservatively estimates that people use. What, David, what's an ERU?
Yeah, yeah. So. Gallons per day. You're touching on, and, and one of the things, Mr. Goldstein, the thing that, part of what we do also is, is monitoring our actual flows to what we would anticipate from projections. And we always have this kind of ongoing true-up in perpetuity. Because our best guess of what we think is going to come in from growth and development is never going to be exact. And so what we've, what we've seen over time, particularly with water conservation, is that there are certain types of demand estimates that we utilize that have been gradually coming down. You know, think of, think of as an example, you know, when you're, when, when your housing product is primarily a single-family home, and, and now we have a lot more multifamily. So on the surface, it's really easy to understand the, the reduction in water usage. But in addition to that, there's actually a reduction in, in the wastewater usage too as you get to more dense development. So that's, that kind of factors into it as well. And so that's why, you know, for, for our planning purposes, what we're doing is we're just, we just want to make sure that we have an appropriate projection that we're comfortable with so that we can plan the capital improvements to come online. I don't want to say just in time, but before just in time when the demands are really needed.
So what you're saying is that our population could actually be at medium, high, or high, but the pure capita consumption is maybe lower than what you originally assumed.
Right.
Than what's assumed.
And then as part of our processes, then we, you know, as, as those changes, as we see those changes over time, then we would make provisions to our design standards and those types, and our planning standards to accommodate those changes.
So, and you mentioned permitted capacity right now is a little less than, the actual use is a little less than permitted, like maybe a little, less than half of what permitted capacity. And so you can transfer between stations? So if for some reason that line does intersect earlier than is expected, you can transfer between different stations?
Right.
You mentioned that was potable water. What about wastewater? Was that?
That was, that was wastewater that.
Oh, there's wastewater, okay.
That exception. And, and on the potable water side, we don't have that flexibility just because we have Tampa Bay Water that's our primary water provider. And based on the inter-local agreement that we have with Tampa Bay Water, there are our
What's, what's the total usage of potable water versus permitted capacity at this time?
Uh, I think it was 50 was.
34 million gallons is the current capacity, I'm sorry, current use, and we're at about 78 million gallon capacity for Tampa Bay Water and our wells.
Okay. So that was potable water. So then, so then the follow-up question is, what about wastewater?
Wastewater current use is about 26 million gallons per day, and our capacity is 33.
Okay. So we're a little closer on.
So we've got seven MGD approximately of excess capacity.
Yes.
And what do we, what are we using as an ERU? I was trying to do my math earlier. I did 7 million gallons a day and 275 GPD as an ERU. And I don't know if that's the number you use or not, but that works out to be roughly 25,000 housing units of capacity available. And so my question is probably not for utilities, but it's going to be more for planning staff. Can somebody, and I'm sure you don't have this data with you today, but maybe at a future meeting, in 2023, how many units have we approved? We just approved 399 here 15 minutes ago. And.
Be interested to look.
Over the last year, I'm sure that's probably numbers in the thousands. I don't know whether it's 5,000 or 10,000, but it'd probably be nice to know and to let these folks know.
Well, at some point, too, there has to be the connection between not just the zoning or the entitlements, but the actual building permits and what's actually built.
Agree.
And what the flow-through rate is from stuff that's.
Agree. And I will, I will grant to you that some of the developers are in here probably entitling property and setting it up to flip it. But then there are others, some of the big national home builders who have every intent of breaking ground ASAP and building units. So it, I'm not saying there's a problem, I'm just saying I think that would be helpful to be able to convey, hey, we've approved X many units so that these folks know that this, they could get hit with this.
So, so Mr. Rudy, if I, if I could just jump in real quick. So, so Mr. Gonzalez mentioned our current capacities. As I mentioned at the onset, we're, we're, we're in the middle of doing an expansion. And so we're, we're planning to have that additional capacity online, I think, within the next two years. And we're in the process right now of selecting a design build contractor, or we just recently did for our Land of Lakes facility. Yeah, and these are all good things. And then in our, our, our capital plan, we have funding programmed in for either an expansion of Wesley Center or Shady Hills, depending on where the needs are. So, so we're always kind of ahead of that a little bit. So as, as, as you continue to see those units coming in, we're working on the backend to
I'm asking the question, I'm not, I think you guys are doing a good job. And I understand how difficult it is, it's, to expand the capacity of a wastewater treatment plant is not only figuring out how you're going to treat the water, but then how you're going to dispose of that water. That's probably the bigger, more difficult challenge. The nature of my question is just so that now that we kind of know, hey, wait a minute, as we sit here and approve units and approve units and approve units and approve units, it doesn't go without affecting this department. And we should probably, hopefully, there's somebody keeping a tally of the number of units that are being approved in total.
And what the flow-through rate is from stuff that's.
Yeah, I realize that it's not all going to come online next week, but a serious amount of these right now are coming online very quick.
So can I try to defend utilities a little bit?
We're not criticizing.
You know, well, we're even planning. I think a lot of what we approve should be in these Bieber projections, though. I mean, and that's why I asked the question, why are they not using high instead of medium? Because planning's using high, and they're using medium. If they were using the same population projections, everything we approve should be part of those population projections. I mean.
Well, I don't know how Bieber makes their population projections, but it would just seem to me we should have the data of what we've approved.
They look at historical growth, and I've said in many meetings with the Planning Department about how we estimate our growth for the future. And they've come to the conclusion that the best estimate, even taking into account all of our recent growth and all of our recent approvals, should be somewhere around medium, high. Okay, not high, but medium, high. No, there's been some advocates that it should be high versus, my concern is that our utility department's using medium and our planning department's using medium, high or high. Because if the planning department who, who knows about all the approvals you're talking about is saying we're at high or medium, high.
But I think he gave you an explanation for that, and I actually agree with his explanation having practiced this. He's saying for what they do, that the numbers work out better when they use medium. They're making an assumption that a household uses a certain number of gallons per day, and it's, it's more likely that the household is not using that number of gallons, they're using a lesser amount.
Maybe they should be changing their assumptions for their use assumptions, not their population assumptions.
Hold on, hold on. They, they rely on data, for instance, from the American Water Works Association. And I think Jamie can chime in a little bit on this. We get asked to size water meters, and we get asked to size it, size it using the latest version of AWAM 22. And if you go look at the most recent version of AWAM 22, it says right at the outset that the data in here is no good because it hasn't been studied since the 1950s. So they don't have the luxury of knowing exactly what every household uses today. I guess maybe they could go through billing data or whatever, but, you know, they're not getting that from the AWAM. We design, we design water meters based on how much water a water faucet designed in 1950 would use, not after low-flow toilets and low-flow faucets were, and low-flow showerheads were required in modern plumbing.
Well, and you're looking at two different data sets, right? So you're looking at a population increase as well as per capita, either decrease or increase of the water usage per person. So it's, it's two different moving scales.
And all I'm, all I'm asking is, and I have no criticism of utilities whatsoever, and I'm not criticizing planning, and I think it would be nice to know, as a sitting Planning Commissioner, is what is the quantity of units we've approved? We come in here and we routinely approve hundreds, in the hundreds at every meeting, sometimes over 1,000 at a meeting. I'm doing 24 or 25 meetings a year. That quickly adds up to the number of capacity that they have available if we keep it up at this rate.
Well, I think Adolfo's probably going to get into this as he goes on, looking at the slides he has coming up. But I mean, they, they also have the other mechanism, the later down the line tracking with the, the service connection applications and be able to track actual permitted units, even though the capacity is not reserved at that point.
I think the caution I'm trying to give is not to them, it's to us. We need to be aware that every time we approve units, it has an impact on public facilities. That's all.
Can I just break in for one second? Approve means going forward. We're looking at the forward of water usage, and particularly with wastewater. And I know I've said this before, so just bear with me for two and a half seconds. I, I'd like to try to. I, I'd like to try to look at also, um, retrograding communities up and down the street. One of the avenues that I live, or in the community that I live, let's rephrase that. There are a number of homes that were built, let's say twenty years ago, that are using water that we drink, potable water, I think is the pronunciation, if I'm correct. I'd like to say we set some funds aside to try and retrograde certain communities. I tried this in my community and, and I had the money available to me, but I couldn't get a state senator to approve it. And it, it broke my heart, to be honest with you, because I, I am a firm believer in wastewater, my friends. And so that's all I ask is to look backwards too and forwards on wastewater, so.
Reclaim water?
Reclaim water, thank you. Reclaim water?
Yes, you're right. And the last point I wanted to make too, is when you're looking at that data, there's got to be a, a number that we can look at historically to see what the flow-through from what was approved to actually what was built. And so if we come up, we have enough empirical data at this point to be able to come up with a estimate as to, you know, hey, our average flow-through rate of, of approved to built was seventy-three percent of all the stuff that was approved. And then we can go back and look at that based on the number that we have now that's approved and say, all right, if historically speaking, seventy-three percent of these projects are actually getting built. And that's, that's a much better data set, I think, than, you know, because we're dealing with real data as opposed to, not that, not that Bieber is doing a bad job, but that is all pure projection as opposed to, at least we have a data set to work off of in, in planning. So for what it's worth, something to look at.
For instance, I've seen the statistic that in 2023, there were more than five-thousand single-family building permits issued. Is that somewhere, am I somewhere in the neighborhood? And I have no idea how many multifamily building permits were issued. I, all I'm saying is I think it would be helpful if we were, if we had this data available to us. We have a great GIS system, we have all of these tools to track all this stuff.
Maybe Brad's about to tell us there isn't.
Or he's going to give us the numbers.
No, Brad's not going to be that nice. Brad's in planning and development. All of those things occur downstream from what we do. So we don't actually have data on what gets built. Those things come out through the billing department, through a different, different set of stuff. So data may be there, but it creates a, a difficulty for the planning department to try and coordinate that.
But does the planning department?
These guys participate in all of those, these types of things at the early stages. So they're aware of what's coming online and when. And they've made some business decisions as to whether the Bieber model matches that or if they feel that they want to go and do the detailed data.
Does planning have data as to how many entitlements have been issued over a given time period?
We can theoretically pull that, but it's degree of accuracy. We have a lot of flexibility with looms and other things, so there's, but we can, we can, we can give you some general idea if you give us a specific date range that you're interested in.
Well, it's not even a question of just how many we've approved, it's when are they going to come online?
And that we don't know.
And that's, that's, who knows? Nobody ever knows the answer to that question.
Yeah, we get that.
But we know that if they approve them today, they're not going to come online tomorrow.
Correct. And they may not come online at all.
So that, that, that's why I think, you know, you can look at all the data you want to, but when I get to a, a piece of property and I want to develop it and I call the county and they say, well, we don't have any utilities there, guess what? I can't develop it.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's the reality. Until, until utilities get there. So, I mean, it's sort of a, you know, self-fulfilling prophecy.
Yeah, I think there's a, a actual.
We've got that situation on County Line Road right now. There's a number of development properties there that are, have been approved, but there's no utilities there. And we can't get it, get it from Hernando County because they, they won't come to the table.
Right.
You know, so we're stuck. And what can we do about it? Doesn't matter what data we have.
Right.
We don't have utilities there. It's simple as that.
There's a, there's a definite breakpoint for the benefit of work effort. Um, you could dig into the data and get very specific and come up with a very specific number, but the work effort to produce that may not be but a fraction of a fraction of a percent off of the Bieber model. So it's, it's a taxpayer dollar issue. It's, it's all kinds of different things. So it's just kind of depending on how you want to do it. As far as entitlements, we can pull some of it with some reasonable accuracy, uh, but it's not going to be exact. It's, it's not.
Yeah, I understand that. The looms create an issue.
I also think you may be underestimating Bieber just a little bit. I mean, it's a little more accurate than you think. And part of the reason we're at high or medium-high is because we're approving so many. We're, we're a high-growth county. We're not in the low-medium range. There's a reason we're not in Bieber-low-medium because we're, all the stuff you see on your agenda, that's putting us up into high and medium-high.
And we're looking, I'm looking at this graphic here and where they're needing or planning to do some improvements or right where we're approving all these units, so.
I mean, but that was my original point, which is we're probably close to high, okay? Given all of our approvals. That was my original concern about utilities using medium if planning departments using, knowing everything we're approving is saying we're at medium-high or high. So they've explained the reason why they're using medium. I, I get it. I'm not, you know, it is what it is. To the layperson though, it is a little odd though, when our transportation planners are using medium-high, our land use planners are medium, using medium-high, and our utility departments using medium. That, it's a little hard for the layperson to understand that, but it is what it is.
So, so perhaps instead of adjusting the particular Bieber graph you're going to use is maybe it would be better to use the same Bieber graph that everybody else is using, but perhaps adjust your per capita usage assumptions.
That, that's what I was suggesting you do.
We'll take a look into that. And since we're starting those master plans this year, we'll coordinate with planning, development, long-range planning to reconcile that so we use the same data, if it makes sense on, from a utilities planning perspective.
I think what David's saying is making sense because it's more transparent to the average person looking at it.
That makes sense.
Terry, I mean, are we in fact, are we at medium-high? Is that where we're kind of landing on?
We are, so in the comprehensive plan update project that we're working on now, we've just completed some population projection exercises. We are above medium-high. So, um, we're, we're, we're in the high range for sure at the moment. And, um, to refine the Bieber estimates a little further, we actually went back and double-checked against, um, against addressing, against what kind of data does the GIS system showing us versus what the projections are simply telling us, right? So we compared that data and did some hybrid analysis. And, um, what we, what we've determined for the comprehensive plan update is to expect high-growth rate over the next five to seven years, um, taking us basically into twenty-thirty-two-ish. Because remember, the count plan is going to be active in twenty-twenty-five, so hopefully. So it'll take us into twenty-twenty, twenty-thirty-two at the high rate and then make an assessment at that stage, um, how things are, you know, building up in Pasco. And if we, if we need to recalibrate the projections to medium-high in twenty-thirty-three, uh, out to twenty-fifty, right? Or extend the high-growth rate, uh, into the next decade essentially, further into the next year.
So Terry, as part of MPO's long-range plan, are they going to be using the same population projections that?
So the LRTP and the comprehensive plan are, uh, coordinated approach for population projections right now.
That was basically my underlying point, which is if you and MPO are kind of on rock step with what you're doing for population, it would make sense for utilities to be in the same.
Yes. And once we have buttoned down the methodology, we're, we're going to share it with utilities. We'll share it with facilities as well and all the other departments in the county. The other thing to keep in mind as part of the comprehensive plan update, we are doing a carrying, what we're calling a carrying capacity exercise to understand how much population the county is going to receive essentially based on these projections. And what are we going to need to do to accommodate the population that's coming into the county? Uh, and that's going to be, uh, we, I don't have any answers to that right now, but that is an exercise that we're running this first half of the, of twenty-twenty-four. And that'll include the density, you know, are, are, is our future land use calibrated properly? In other words, does the RES three or the RES six, where we see them today, are they going to be able to receive the population that's projected to come to Pasco County? Are the, are the utilities going to be in place? Are the soft services like police and fire going to be there? Those are the types of things that we're going to be looking at.
Yeah, I forget about that.
Schools, yes, absolutely. So that's, that's an exercise that's pending.
Thanks, Terry.
Chris, what are you using?
So we, we get numbers from the state, which we look at, but we, we pretty much do our own internal and project out. We find it's, because again, you can't ever predict when is this, this development actually going to build. So we tend to look at historical and then like if we're growing like a, a one-point-five percent or two percent, and we look at the, those trends and, and project out based on that, based on student growth. A lot of ours, the other thing is it's localized obviously, so we have to kind of plan for, it's not just a county-wide, which is important to look at, but it's also a localized, where do we think that growth is going to happen? You know, um, and then plan schools.
I guess the difference in schools is that general population growth doesn't always equate to student growth.
Correct.
Because we could get influx of retirees and it wouldn't affect your student numbers.
And then the other variable obviously is charter schools. You know, charter schools, it'd be like somebody, you don't have charter water treatment plants that just all of a sudden spring up and take capacity. So, you know, that kind of throws a monkey wrench in it too. We're not ever always a hundred percent sure on when those things are going to pop up and consume some capacity. So you don't want to get too far out in front. It'd be nice to get out in front, but number one, we don't have the money to get that far out in front. And then also you don't want to overbuild and here comes a charter school and now you've got two schools that are at full. That's not efficient either, so it's, it's difficult. But we don't use, again, we don't necessarily look at Bieber because that, obviously that's total population. I mean, we could factor out what the student population is based on that, but we just look more at historical trends of data that we keep. Along with, we, we take the county information and we track that ourselves also.
Although it looks like that, that Bieber data you had there was regional, correct?
It is.
I mean, it's regional, but it's, it's like.
Yeah.
The entire population. So then, you know, then you're doing a percentages of how many of those are students. And then also we're redoing an impact fee study. They look at that, that data as well to try to forecast how many schools are we going to need over the next five, ten years.
Right, you want to continue?
Big danger.
With respect to capacity, there are many things that capacity can be defined as. The primary ones are shown in this graphic. On the water side, essentially water supply, the ability to provide the, the water along with the transmission and distribution network for that, conveying that water supply. On the wastewater side, it's a combination of wastewater plants, uh, master pump stations, and the treatment requirements at the plant determine what is considered available capacity or what is needed to provide the capacity. And in addition to that, there's also transmission piping that's part, that could be part of a capacity definition. But when it comes to transmission piping, there really isn't a, a, the county does not plan for extensions of the existing transmission main, main network. The only transmission pipes we have in our capital plan have to do with, again, providing that operational flexibility, moving flows from one plant to the other. Our utility rate structure also does not include funding, uh, transmission main extension projects as well. The utility rate structure is basically based on funding capital plant expansion and those operational flexibility types of projects, pipelines, pump stations, to provide that flexibility to move flows around so that we have the available capacity at every wastewater plant that's, that's, uh, serving a particular wastewater or water service area. By the way, the current revenue coming in from our utility rates doesn't even meet the, doesn't even fund the full amount of the cost of our plant expansions. Our plant expansion costs have exceeded what we're bringing in revenues for just plant expansions, uh, which again, does not include transmission main expansions. To summarize, the county's current policy, the county pays for plant expansion, plant capacity, and developers pay for transmission main extensions. That's how it has worked over the last few years.
So Mr. Chairman, that, that's the reason why you have the situation that you have? Because your connection fees are going to expand the plant. They're not going to build lines to any particular property and it's assumed the developer will have to bring the lines to the property.
Right.
There's some areas of the county where that's cost feasible, but then there's other areas like maybe on County Line Road where the cost of bringing utilities that far north would exceed the benefit. So when Hernando decided to not provide utilities, that's why that area is what it is. Now, it's possible that all the landlords in that area could get together and do something like what BOPH did, which is they came in and kind of agreed to do an additional surcharge on their connection fees to pay for the extension of all the lines into that area. But that has not happened along County Line Road, in part because of this uncertainty about what Hernando is going to do or not do.
Right, right.
So there are some areas of the county. Everything they're talking about is about plants where there's areas, you know, there's a possibility of serving it with lines. But there's whole areas of the county that are currently rural and unwell and septic, um, that unless lines get extended by the development committee into those areas, they're not going to pay for it.
Right. Yeah, they shouldn't.
There are some guidelines. For instance, the public facilities element of the comprehensive plan has some distance and demand guidelines that we apply when looking at when a developer is required to extend a pipeline. Essentially, the, the larger the potential demand is, uh, the farther away from our current system, the developer may be required to extend a pipeline. If they don't want to extend the pipeline and they're outside of those thresholds, then it's up to them to find some alternative way if it's allowed by Florida statutes. Sometimes, depending on the type of development, they may not be able to build their own private wastewater facility if it doesn't have the dimensional requirements, let's say, for septic systems. But that, uh, demand is based on calculating what's considered an equivalent residential unit.
Does Pasco County allow private wastewater treatment systems?
The ordinance allows for wastewater treatment plants under certain conditions. We have generally discouraged that because, uh, historically privately-run wastewater plants aren't managed and operated as well as some of the county-owned systems. And sooner or later, the county may be having to acquire that system. So we've discouraged it over the years, but the ordinance doesn't allow, allow it under certain circumstances.
Some of our biggest water quality issues have been privately-owned systems. And price, I mean, we don't typically can't regulate the price either. So sometimes you have folks that are paying exorbitant prices for low-quality systems.
How many currently private facilities are there, uh, water treatment, no, I'm sorry, water facilities, drinking water?
I don't know, Commissioner. There, there's over twenty private utility companies that are providing water or wastewater services throughout the county. But they're mostly for specific neighborhoods or very well-defined developments.
Because for years there, there wasn't a county to exist.
There was one in Land of Lakes, that's what, when David brought the question forward, a comment about private facilities, I just remembered that one. Uh, Land of Lakes had quite a few issues with it. Just asking. I didn't think there were any anymore, to be honest with you.
There are some.
Okay, thank you.
Back to the concept of an ERU, an equivalent residential unit. So all our demand data is based on normalizing what is considered a projected demand on an ERU basis. So one equivalent residential unit is essentially a single-family household. What that household generally requires in terms of either potable water or generates in wastewater. We take that information and then couple it with the type of specific use that's planned for that development to generate what the demand is for each of those uses. But that also depends on things such as what is the total maximum development footprint for that parcel? It's not just the overall gross area of the parcel. You have to exclude things such as open space or conservation areas, stormwater areas. And that level of detail typically is not provided at a conceptual or zoning or an entitlement phase. If it is, it's so conceptual that it most likely would be changed by the time a developer gets to the construction drawing phase. By that phase, we're ready, the, the developers have given us detailed conception projections, a detailed land plan coupled with a proposed infrastructure plan. detailed land plan, coupled with a proposed infrastructure plan that determines pipe size. And then we can then issue a letter of commitment that provides essentially that says that that plant capacity will be available when they construct those improvements. I do want to point out, back to this slide, though. So, the three components we need are the land use data, the final development plan, and a master utility plan for that development that creates, it's based on the phasing, to then develop the potential equivalent residential unit demand for the overall phasing. With that, I'd like to wrap up by saying that our system is fairly extensive throughout the county. There are areas that aren't currently served. That's because our system is based on just plant expansions and meeting the needs of current customers. We plan for future plant expansions and water supply projects, but not necessarily extending mains. And the utilities assessment information we provide you in our planning documents is really very conceptual in nature. It's not until the final construction drawing phases that we have enough detail to provide you with some level of, a higher level of confidence that that capacity will be available on the plants when it's needed.
So, can I ask you a question on your prior slide? So, we've had some applications that come to the Planning Commission where there's actually been a dispute about whether the applicant is going to be required to connect to county water and sewer. And the reason this comes up is because sometimes we have objecting residents who say, "Well, if they're unwell and septic, it's going to impact," they argue it's going to impact their wells, or they don't want more folks putting well and septic into their neighborhood. And so, I think Mr. Moody, remember, there was that one particular application where the applicant was asserting that there was adequate water and sewer available. And then you looked it up, and there really wasn't.
Correct. I didn't think their neighbors would be too happy when they ran a line past their house and they got forced to connect.
That was Moon Lake, I think.
Yeah, or the opposite happens where they're forced to connect.
So, then we had another application where the land use agenda memo in front of us said, it only talked about plant capacity. And then the applicant got up and said, "Well, I'm going to be on well and septic." And we had, you know... So, I guess, I understand that you don't know the details of exactly whether they will or won't. But if the land use proposal is before us, there's at least some level of entitlements for maximum entitlements that are assumed in the land use proposal. You can't tell us, assuming the maximum that's built, whether they'd have to connect to water and sewer?
If the developer provided that level of detail, we could make some initial finding whether they would be required to connect to the system or not. For instance, if they provide enough detail to determine the total flow demand and flow projections and then the proximity to our existing system, we could say, "Yeah, based on the comprehensive plan table, they're within the required distance to connect." But that's all we would be telling you, is that they're required to connect or extend or improve existing transmission mains.
In the last few, they've done that.
Right. If they're outside those thresholds, we can't require them to extend our facilities to meet their site. But then they may be restricted by what they could develop. They might not be able to get their highest land use if they now have to revert back to septic tanks and wellfields.
And that's the other issue that's relevant to the decision-making the Planning Commission has to make is it affects density decisions as well. So, the commission may say, "I'm okay with the level of density that you're requesting if you're on county water and sewer. But if you're going to be well and septic, there's no way I'm approving that many units." So, they have to have at least some indication about whether the developer, based on what they're proposing, would be required to connect to county water and sewer. Previously, I saw an email chain where it sounded like you are willing to provide that information as part of the land use approvals that are coming to the Planning Commission. Is that still accurate?
It is. We would rather not provide it at that stage because it's just, it's too conceptual in nature. But if the developer provides in their application specific demand projection data that is converted to equivalent residential units, he tells us where the development is, we can see where the existing infrastructure is, look at the comprehensive plan table and determine would they be required or not.
Well, that seems easy to solve. I mean, we could just make that part of the application requirements for the rezoning.
So, in the last, we only had one comp plan amendment today, and it was for Conland. But in the, during our last, you weren't here, David, but during our last Planning Commission meeting, we did have comprehensive plan amendments. And that, the data that you're talking about was actually included. There was a statement, "This development is anticipated to generate X many ERUs water and wastewater demand, the nearest reclaimed water line." In fact, I remember Mr. Hansel commenting on the distance to reclaimed water. The nearest reclaimed water line is this. They'll be, they will or they won't be required to connect the nearest water main or nearest sewer is. But they did do this, they're doing this.
So, that's why I make sure that is going to continue. I couldn't tell from your last slide whether you intending to continue that practice.
We would rather not provide that information for the entitlement phase. There's just too many unknowns. For example...
Okay, well, I'm not sure that answer's going to work for the Planning Commission.
So, if I could break it down, I want to take a half a step back first before we get to proximity to utilities. I think that, and this helps for me to understand kind of the broader issue that we're having a conversation on. So, one is that if we have utilities that are readily available, right in front of the property, those types of things, I think that, again, we then look at that and say, "Oh, yeah, we could serve that based on them meeting whatever requirements." If they're outside of, if there's not utilities in proximity to that, we do not want to be in a position where we say, "Yeah, we can or can't serve that" because we don't know whether or not we can. That's number one. And number two, we don't know if they're actually going to connect to our system. If developer over here is three miles away and they're willing to build the system to connect it, then that's when we say, "Okay, we can look at whether or not we'll take on that capacity." So, that's kind of the, what I would see is the brackets. But I think that where we're at now is then when there's a project that's in between and whether or not there's a requirement that they have to extend our system. And we generally look at it from a estimated demand standpoint. You know, if their demand is X and they're within Y, then we would say, "Yes." If it's larger than Y, we would say, "No, they're not required to do that." And I think that, I think, David, to your point is if we can, if we're provided the information on what the demands are, we should be able to make that assessment in terms of, "Okay, that falls within..."
So, my question is, does our rezoning application form need to have an additional blank on it where the applicant provides that estimated demand information?
It may. If that is, if that's critical for this body to make a recommendation and decision.
Well, so, like, for instance, David, we have a case, it's currently under continuance. It's waiting to come back, so I'm going to be careful about what I say. But we have a case where an applicant came in and wanted the maximum possible density on a property in 40-foot-wide frontage lots. And there's no utilities anywhere near the site. And we asked the applicant, "Are you willing to connect to water and sewer?" And unfortunately, the applicant couldn't commit to us. So, that's why that case has continued. And I don't know when they're going to come back and answer. But we clearly can't approve them to have 40-foot-wide lots if there's not going to be utilities because you can't build a septic system on a 4,000-square-foot lot. You need to have a half acre by state law. So, that's, I think that's what David's getting at. We need to have some information like that. We had the industrial park case up on 41 where that was an issue. They want, they're proposing wells, the neighbors were upset about it. And we wanted to know, was it actually feasible for them to have potable water service to this industrial park?
The comp plan provides guidance on when somebody has to connect.
Correct.
The problem is, is this body typically doesn't know how many ERUs that particular development is generating, nor do they know how far away the closest utilities are, unless that information is in their memo.
He's got this nice chart right here.
Right, but that's all the theoretical, but you don't know, even if you know that information, you don't know how far close the closest utilities are unless somebody tells you. The difference with utilities is on roads, okay? They can look at an aerial photograph and know exactly the condition of the roads
Right.
that are in the vicinity. To the best of my knowledge, there's no easy source for them to look up and say, "There's a 12-inch water line or a 10-inch gravity line, and this is how far away it is from the property." So, how do we, how would the Planning Commission get that information?
During the last...
We can certainly provide that as part of our staff's response when we coordinate with planning and development.
And in our previous packet.
So, then you have that information to this body. I think what Mr. Gonzalez is talking about with us not providing the information is when it's a comp plan that goes from an ag to a rez 3, right? We don't know what that means from a water demand standpoint. And that's why we don't want to commit and say, "Yeah, this is what it is." But if the applicants are saying, "Hey, this is what we're looking at in terms of estimated use," then we can apply the criteria that's in the comp plan and make a yes or no determination based on that.
In the example you just gave, it was going ag to rez 3. How would you not know, be able to estimate? It's three dwelling units per acre. You know the number of acres, so that's the maximum there could be. And I will tell you that generally, it'll never achieve the maximum, but that's the max, that's the maximum possibility.
Yeah, and I think it ties back to the elements that are listed here on the slide. Where, you know, even though that may be the maximum, we know that that's not what it's built to. There's open spaces, conservation, and those types of things.
So, in the transportation world, I know they use sort of a percentage of the maximum. So, they call it a reasonable yield analysis where they think they take like 65% of what the maximum future land use would be and say, "That's the reasonable yield for this property." And then they just assume a number of trips based on that reasonable yield. I think Commissioner Moody's point is, why can't you do something similar for utilities? And just say, "This is what we think the reasonable yield is of those entitlements. Based on that reasonable yield, we think that they would or would not have to connect to our utilities located this far away."
Because once we approve the entitlements, it's a cat's out of the bag. We don't want to approve the entitlements. That's a fair question. And I think the response is really embedded into a couple of things. Number one is at the phase that those entitlements are issued, getting back to the fundamental, we don't know if they're going to get built or not. Even though that that entitlement has been allocated to the facility, we don't know if that's going to get built. And the one thing that we don't want to do is build everything on entitlements because then we would have an excess capacity.
Yeah, I think we may be confusing two different issues, okay? Nobody here is suggesting that you build your plant capacity based on a theoretical comp plan amendment or that you go out and start spending a bunch of money because somebody asked for rez 3.
Right.
What I'm asking is, can't you at least say, based on the comp plan criteria, if they got some percentage of the, say, 65%, or we're just going to come up with a number, of what's approved, would they or would they not have to connect to county water and sewer? And where is it? You know, that's, I don't think anybody's asking you to commit that you'll provide water and sewer to them, commit that you'll have plant capacity. I think all I'm asking for is, can you at least tell us, how would the comp plan apply? How would the comp plan criteria apply to this project?
Because if it comes down to the line that they don't have the ability to connect due to budgetary constraints or whatever, then the whole application becomes moot. And you can save them a lot of money. Completely understand. And I'm thinking of it from a, again, just kind of bringing it back to a planning perspective of, you know, for every acre of property, there's a certain percentage that can really be developed, right? Because there's area requirements, you have setbacks and those types of things. The thing that we look at it from our standpoint is we've always been looking at our services based on the actual demands. And we use the single-family unit as kind of that basis. And so, you know, we could look at that. But I think that our first cut at potentially coming up with appropriate percentages, we would probably need to rely on the development community to provide us with that information because we don't, we don't track it at that level. We're tracking it more on a...
So, that's why I suggested you at least look at what they're doing on transportation. Because the development community has accepted their reasonable yield numbers. They have the same issue in transportation, okay? So, somebody assumes C2 zoning or R4 zoning. And if they made them analyze all the traffic for the maximum C2 zoning, it would probably blow up every road in the area. So, they don't do that. They say, "We assume that you'll only be able to get 65% of what the zoning allows, and that's how we're going to estimate our trip generation." I'm not saying it has to be exactly 65% or that you... But the development community has accepted that reasonable yield to estimate trip generation. I would think that there'd be a number you could come up with to estimate water and sewer needs as well.
No, no, and I completely agree. I think that, again, if we go down that approach, implement that approach, again, it's really just that preliminary first look at a project, right? Because we're not, again, we're not tying down, we're not going to reserve capacity, we're not going to build capacity. But that could be a tool for us then to utilize that, overlay that on our projections and see, you know, are we on track with those or do we need to respond to those more quickly?
Yeah, that's why I want to try to divorce the capacity conversation from this conversation because I think your whole first part of your presentation was, "We build capacity based on population projections." We're not going to mess up the plant capacity issue. I think even Mr. Moody has agreed that you're not going to mess up plant. I hope you've gotten to that point, right? So, I don't think this is an issue of plant capacity or anybody expecting you to go out and start building a bunch of plant capacity.
Well, no, I think the discussion got started because we got a report that said there was zero uncommitted capacity.
But you've now convinced us that you've got plant capacity under control.
Right.
The issue we, the Planning Commission has decided when they're making a land use decision for 40-foot lots or, you know, is county water and sewer available or not? Or do they need to connect or not? That's not a plant capacity discussion. That's a proximity and ERU discussion.
Right.
Yeah, because if an application says we're rezoning from rez 1 to rez 6, and so then we figure, "Okay, that's four ERUs per acre for rez 6 is what our, we figured our flow-through is." And you can kind of figure out how much, how many ERUs there are for that particular project and then say, "Okay, well, based on that number, you're going to have to connect." And then we can say, "Okay, well, it's three miles away." And we go back to the developer before it ever gets to our hearing to say, "All right, you're going to have to connect based on what we figure projected flow-through."
No, I think we're all talking the same thing. I think we're all talking, because...
That way, we don't have to prove that entitlement, which is then, you know...
But here's the thing that you've got to take into account, though. You can't withhold entitlement from a landowner just because there's no sewer available. He can't develop it, but he still has the right to have the entitlement or the zoning change. Just because the sewer's not there yet doesn't mean that he doesn't have the right to apply for an entitlement or a change of zoning.
But if it's far enough away, I think it does lead to the question that Mr. Moody asked for that one application is, if it's beyond the distance the comp plan required them to connect, I think it's reasonable for the Planning Commission to ask the applicant, "Are you willing to connect five miles away?" I agree with what you're saying.
Yeah.
But the applicant should be able to say, "I'm willing to build a line five miles away to connect."
Or you might say, you know, "I'll wait for the line to get there. I just want the entitlements because I've got a couple of those." And I've got people that are actually going ahead and getting their entitlements even though they're not going to do anything with the property for several years.
Well, I think then it becomes a planning decision for the Planning Commission because you could argue that if the infrastructure is not there yet or it's not even feasible for any time in the next 20 years, maybe that project is premature for that level of density.
Well, yeah, absolutely. That's a different question. All I'm saying is they have a reasonable...
I know, but maybe you condition the entitlements and say, "We'll give you 10 units now, and we'll give you 100 units when you have water, when you have sewer."
Yeah, I mean, obviously, it's going to be subject to them being able to connect.
Right.
Yeah, it's no different with a substandard road or something like that.
We had, you weren't here the last time, but we had a case where the applicant came in and argued for an increased density entitlement and claimed, "Well, this is going to be a four, this is going to be a four-lane road." And then when we asked, "Well, when is this going to be four-laned?", we found out it was sometime in the next decade, beyond the next decade. Well, so, it wasn't going to be four-laned anytime soon. And what the proposal was, was a bit premature. a bit premature for the area.
The other thing is sometimes it can affect whether you're approving too little density. Because sometimes if you need to extend a sewer line five miles, you may need a minimum level of density to be able to pay for that, the extension of that sewer line. And so, if, if, I think it's irrelevant to the planning commission's decision if, if you're, if the public's coming in and saying, I want a lower density, but you know that they need a minimum just to, to extend the sewer line, that's something you, I think we want to know before you start-
Which that's like the Moonlight case we looked at. We, they wanted six or seven lots and we said, I, I can tell you right now, it's not feasible to run a line in here to service those six or seven lots.
Yeah, you don't want someone ending up with entitlements that are unfeasible and flipping the property to somebody else thinking, okay, I could build on this.
Well, that'd be a moron that would buy that property. But you, the point is, the point is, is that unless you-
No, no comment. We may have had a few applicants who have fallen that category.
If, if you, if you can condition the property so that whatever entitlements they get, they have to have the appropriate utilities to go with it, you know? And if they're willing to wait or if they're willing to run the line or whatever they're willing to do. But I'm just saying that, that there's-
I think-
In my mind, there's no reason for them not to. There's some people, you know, if it takes two years to get entitlements, people are thinking, well, I'm going to go and get my entitlements because two years from now I want to be able to sell it and close on it.
Have you ever been down to Punta Gorda?
Many times.
Okay, so, a company who's famous for selling swampland in Florida develops a bunch-
That wasn't me.
Develops a bunch of lots down there that are five and six and 7,000 square feet, builds roads, there's entire neighborhoods where there are all these lots and all these roads and there are no houses because there's no utilities out there and there are all these unsuspecting morons that bought these lots sight unseen from places up north and that will never be able to build on these things.
Well, there's a certain amount of reliance on people like us to do our jobs, right? In, in the planning development.
But I mean, I, I, that particular company I'm referring to has got quite a few of these developments all over the state that look like that. Well, we've got some here in Moonlight State.
Well-
35-foot lots, 110 feet deep, you know?
And the difference with utilities, like I said earlier, is unlike roads where you, anybody could, any moron can drive out and see that's not a dirt road, okay? There may be some people that don't realize driving to the lot that it doesn't have water and sewer because it's all underground. They would have no way of knowing. They're not sophisticated enough to check it.
That's why they hire attorneys.
Not everybody hires an attorney or an engineer or, we've also learned that with-
Just because you're an attorney doesn't mean you know to call, you need to go in the engineering contract management website and ask for a copy of the atlas map either.
But even that, even if they were referred to the atlas map that shows where the nearest utilities are and that's the distance, we would give that information to you along with the ERUs provided by the developer. That doesn't mean that that pipeline, that's closest to that development site-
Has capacity.
Has the capacity or the right size to convey the flow to it. So, to what level of detail are you expecting the developers to provide information to us? Now, we're talking about possible water, wastewater models to determine if that nearest utility that's within the proximity threshold of that comp plan table, if that's the correct pipeline they have to connect to.
Or may require force main, you don't know.
So, you can see that, that's, that's our anxiety in giving you this information now that it could imply there is either capacity or an allocation there when, yeah, that's the closest one.
But I think the disclaimer is you can say, we're not sure that the pipe size is adequate, you know, this is the closest pipe, this is the size of it, we're not sure if it's adequate the size. I mean, you can put all this, I mean-
We've included that in the current utility statements.
Part of the problem is up until recently, we were getting no information.
Right, something's better than nothing.
So, I understand your anxiety, but the more information you can give, even if it's got disclaimers on it, it's still better than nothing.
I personally thought what was presented to us when I said you weren't here in our last agenda memo was- You keep saying we weren't here. Sufficient.
We missed one meeting.
Exactly. But they've done what you asked. They did it. I would tell you there were some inconsistencies as to what constituted an ERU, but at the end of the day, I think that's probably something that can get worked out. But the basic statement was in line with what you're asking for.
And I, all I was looking for was confirmation that they're going to continue to do that. So-
Yes, we're going to continue to provide the statements we provided just in the recent package.
Okay.
Which essentially ERUs provided by the developer and proximity to the nearest pipeline, the nearest utility.
Would that explain why the ERUs were different? I quickly checked a couple of them and, and I had this exact table that you had there out of the utility manual and I'm like, well, I don't know where, how they calculated this because of the, the math didn't add up, but, and there were four or five comp plan amendments that were on the agenda that day that had the statements and I couldn't get any consistency in the ERUs. So, is it that the developer calculated those?
Yes, we're not doing those calculations. We're confirming the data they provide.
Gotcha. All right, fair enough.
By the way, I would like to thank you for coming and explaining to us how you do your utility planning because if I recall, the planning commission at one point asked for a similar presentation from fire rescue and sheriff and we never got one. So, so I-
Yes, thank you.
So, I thank you for coming in and explaining to us how you do your planning for utilities. I appreciate it.
However, before you take off-
That's the best.
You don't hand, you don't hand with a thank you?
Well, we, of course, that's the best. You notice how-
That's the best, my friend.
And I'm not trying to trap you into anything.
Famous last words.
But I realize you have store water management down here and I kind of know what that is. And I also know what sewer systems are and I know when I flush the toilet, the water goes someplace or when I turn my faucet sink on, the water goes someplace. And I hope that water is converted into what?
Reclaimed.
Reclaimed water, thank you. My gentleman over here on my left here, and I'm sure Mr. Moody had brought this one subject matter up about somebody was trying to develop something and I brought up stone water, I'm sorry, keep that, get me-
Reclaimed.
Reclaimed water, thank you. I kept bringing it up several times. The gentleman to my left, Jamie over here, he brought it up to my attention. They can't pump it that far because the water pressure or the system was not available.
There was a statement in our last agenda package that said, you previously had a policy that if they were within X many feet of a reclaimed water line, they'd be required to connect, but you were making some adjustment to that policy. I think you were shrinking the distance down. And Jamie and I tried to give our best explanation to Peter as to why that might be, but I think what he's asking is to hear from you.
I just want to see reclaimed water utilized as much as possible. I know I had advocated for it at that particular time and I realized that the distance from point A to point B was too great, Mr. Jamie, you pointed out to me as Mr. Moody did too. Yeah, I am an advocate of reclaimed water and they made it clear to me why I couldn't go that far, but I still advocate for it anyway. So, I will be quiet now. Please understand reclaimed water is important, both going forward with it and builders, developers, bring it into communities and I still believe in the fact that it could be retrograded into communities too. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. We do still encourage the use of reclaimed water, but we have made some adjustments slightly because of the available reclaimed water supply is nearing our capacity to provide reclaimed water. Essentially, for every household that receives potable water, we need about two houses back in terms of wastewater to treat it, go through the plant, disinfect it, then turn it around and use it as reclaimed water. We just don't have enough supplies. So, what we have been doing lately is, one reason is for environmental considerations. For instance, there are parts of this county, the northern part of the county, that's within the Wikiwachi spring shed basin that has additional nutrient management requirements. So, we're going to stop requiring developers to provide reclaimed water irrigation systems within those because we can't meet the nutrient load requirements for that, that, that spring shed. There are also other developments that because of the tight footprint of the development, townhomes, for instance, we're not requiring reclaimed water because there's just simply enough green space to send out for the developer to pay the cost of that reclaimed water distribution system to lessen the supply that we have available. The other challenge we have with reclaimed water is that in addition to all the irrigation customers we have, I mentioned the 4G created wetlands project, which has been an award-winning project for us, but now we're obligated to continue to send reclaimed water to those wetlands to make sure that we sustain the hydro periods for those wetlands. That's less water we have available on any given day to provide to customers. On the reclaimed water side, we do not guarantee pressures every day of the week. We pressurize the system certain days to our customers to use for those days. So, that combination of those, that limited demand, limited supply right now and the way the system has just grown over time, we're, we're kind of constrained as to where we can require the use of reclaimed water. Right now, it's mostly to new residential developments within areas that are continuing to expand within the reclaimed water network.
Aren't there some-
But I, I remember John Gallagher once told me, he says that one of the counties to our south indicated that they were dumping water into Tampa Bay, so-
I was going to ask someone a question. Is Arthur, some surrounding jurisdictions that have an excess of reclaimed water? Is there any way that we could start getting, getting a pipe to us? City Tampa, for example.
We want to turn theirs into tap water. City Tampa's the best, one of the best examples because they don't have a, a reclaimed water system they're currently discharging to the bay.
Yeah.
I think upwards of 50 million gallons a day is roughly what their discharge is and, and with, with SB 64, that's supposed to go away. There's, there's requirement that all wastewater plant discharges to water bodies is supposed to terminate in the state of Florida. And so, there's, there's certainly an opportunity there. What Tampa Bay is looking to do potentially is utilize their reclaimed water in some type of either blending or exchange for additional drinking water supplies so that they can, they can offset their, their flow requirements for the Hillsborough River. But, but kind of getting back to what Mr. Gonzalez was saying with, with the reclaimed water system, when you look at, at the development of Pasco County, you know, we have the west side, Newport Ritchie, those areas where we have a lot of density and those folks aren't connected to our reclaimed water system because they were built at a time where, where they just had the, the drinking water systems providing the irrigation. So, we've kind of had what I would call the, the savings account of reclaimed water that's been generated from that part of the county that, that then we've had to manage. And, and, you know, as little as five, eight years ago, we had too much reclaimed water to where, where we were primarily using land application to dispose of it where we would allow the water to percolate back down into the aquifers as, as the source of recharge. But we're now getting close to a point where our, our demands on the reclaimed system are matching what we're able to get out of the wastewater systems and for each new house that comes in, it's not a one-for-one. There's actually more that we need to provide to irrigate each household. So, we're looking to, as part of you, this, this master planning process figuring out, how much further can our reclaimed water system go? And, and then also looking at different ways that we can potentially stretch those supplies as long as possible. So, I think all those are on the table and we're looking at all those and, and also continuing to look at how we manage, you know, the supplies that we have.
Could I say a quick question about the comment you just made about the Wikiwachi spring shed? Where would the, would the reclaimed water come from the Shady Hills plant in that area or where, where would that come from?
That is the most direct location and source for that reclaimed water, but our reclaimed water network is interconnected with all the plants. So, as the state looks at it, they're looking at us reducing-
And are our plants AWT plants or just-
Not yet.
Not yet? Gotcha, okay. Well, I'm kind of chuckling to myself as I hear that. We're not going to provide reclaimed water because we may be adding excess nitrates into the spring shed, but we're not going to extend sewer up there so that we keep them all on well and septic in the same area. That's, that's quite the conundrum to be solved.
Yeah, and we, and, and we're, we're addressing that too as, as, you know, as we're looking at potential extensions of the sewer system. In addition to that, we're planning, the utilities department's planning to bring forward a, a grant from FDP which will provide funding to private parties who want to convert to advanced septic treatment systems to help reduce the nutrient load. And so, I think it's like a $2 million grant that we're, we're in the process of finalizing and then we'll bring, bring that to the commission for approval. So, that, that'll be a kind of a way, again, to address the broader environmental issues with the, with the higher nutrient loads in that area.
Another quick question on the reclaimed water thing. So, do you have an idea of what percentage of potable water customers or dual meter syst-, customers? In other words, one meter for irrigation, one meter for potable water?
I don't. I, I think we, we, I mean, just rough numbers, we, we have close to 130, 140,000 potable connections and, and probably about 35,000 reclaimed.
Okay.
And, and the breakdown of that is-
Well, no, I meant, I meant dual potable connections. So, it's still potable water, but one for irrigation use.
Right, so, so I would just say, anyone that has the, the reclaimed likely has the potable next to it because we don't have very many reclaimed only-
I understand, but I'm talking about the, there's some households that have two pot, it's connected to, they're both connected to potable water lines, but one's, it's two separate meters, so-
So that you don't get billed for the sewer.
So you should get billed for the sewage side of it, basically. So, one's, one's designated for irrigation and-
Maybe I'm not following what the question is.
He's asking if, do you know what percentage of your customers have irrigation meters, not necessarily using reclaimed water, but using potable water such that they don't have to pay the sewer charge?
Oh, no, I don't, I don't know what that number is. I don't know what the irrigation only customer account is.
Because that could be a good indication of the reclaimed water demand, right? And how much water, potable water could be saved? And then, so you look at your percentage of people that have those dual potable water meters, potable water meter and a reclaimed meter and people that just have the potable water.
Just think, if we approve more 40-foot wide lots with 100% coverage, we won't have an irrigation demand.
That's right. Bring out the concrete.
Won't have any trees either.
That's right. And that's an issue.
I'm glad to see you smiling.
All right.
Thank you guys for coming out.
So, so if there's no other, again, I, I would just like to, you know, echo and, and thank you again for giving us the opportunity to meet with you. I'm, I'm hoping that this will help in terms of us moving forward and, and probably the key takeaway just from, you know, from us as staff and you, you as the planning commission, I think the key takeaway for us is, is, you know, looking at the, the land use proposals and, you know, to the degree that we estimate what the ERUs are, we'll provide information in terms of how close, the closest utility is and whether or not, you know, we'll have some disclaimer about capacity because even, you know, even to the, to the degree that it could have capacity today, there could be others that connect to it. But, but we'll, we'll figure out that language and then start providing that. And I think we already are now with our updated changes. So, we'll continue to work with, with the planning and development staff and, and hopefully get you the information that you need.
So, if we have questions on that, on those issues, where do we go?
Go to Terry.
Go to Terry. I knew he was coming up here to volunteer, that's-
No, I think, I think, you know, our preference would be that you continue to work with planning staff because they're really, they're the liaison to the other departments within the county unless, unless planning staff have-
So, in other words, don't call you, you call us.
But, but, I, you know, that, that would be my suggestion, but, because I think that we have really good relationships with them already, but-
That's not what they told me.
So, I don't know if you guys-
The advantage of them putting the information in the agenda memo though is hopefully we have less questions.
Yeah.
Right, because they put the information in the agenda.
Thank you very much.
Right, and, and certainly if there's more technical information or anything like that, we'd be happy to find that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you.
All right.
Chairman, the government's business planning and development department, I just wanted to thank David and Adolfo for coming as well. As part of the exercise, as I mentioned earlier for the conference of plant update, we are going to be meeting and talking with fire rescue and the sheriff's office and David's earlier comment jogged my memory a little bit with regard to the workshop that the planning commission had asked for. And I just wanted to get some clarification. What specifically would the planning commission like to hear from fire rescue or the sheriff's office so that when we meet with them, we can talk to them about this and prepare them and hopefully bring them in, kind of like we did with utilities?
So, we were curious about, similar to the discussion we just had for utilities, what are the planning efforts when we're approving 1,500 or 200,000? Right, we were getting, we had constantly no comment from fire rescue. We've seen that the sheriff's department is giving some comment in the comp plan amendments and rezoning applications, but we were curious about their planning efforts for- but we were curious about their planning efforts for things like substations and new fire stations, and how they...
Do they look at deeper data and all that stuff?
Right. How they plan for the, the growth.
Okay, well, we'll have a conversation with fire, rescue, and the sheriff's office, invite them at an upcoming planning commission.
All right, Terry, thank you.
We've also had some, some objectors who've complained about the lack of police protection in the area, or lack of fire, rescue capacity, and so, unlike schools where we can just talk to Chris, just ask Chris, what's our capacity? Like, there's nobody, there's typically nobody to ask when it comes to those allegations about lack of fire capacity or lack of sheriff...
I know one of the things I'll be curious to know is like, I know, if a developer's gonna come in here and is going to build a development with twenty-five-hundred new homes, well, the school board's gonna say, hey, 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 wait a minute, I may want a site, or need a site for a school. I'm curious, does the sheriff's department get the same opportunity to say, hey, do I need a location for a substation for a development this size, or the fire chief, does he say, I'm gonna need a new, a new engine company here and a fire station? Those are things we don't ever hear about.
Yeah.
Hey Brad Tippin, yes, they do have that opportunity, a lot of them pass it up, depending on what stage it's at, because a lot of their own planning isn't out as far as some of the things that we do, for example, Connected City was twenty-sixty-five, and we were trying to have some people commit, but their own plans were only a few years out. With fire, the fire marshal, a couple of fire marshals ago, actually wasn't able to give us that information ahead of time, give us kinda some estimates, we might need something in that area, we'll get back to you as project, individual projects come through and, and whatnot, but we do provide, anytime an NPD comes in for a zoning compass, those entities get that information and are always welcome to reach out to us and say, hey, we need this, or we need that.
And we, we know that, we know you send it out, because we always see that there was no comment, but I think that's what we were looking for, is...
We, we generally don't have the authority to pressure them to give us a comment, and that's part of the issue, is where we can, we can work with other entities within our own group, we don't have that same authority over the other providers or the other people that might be providing information like that, so...
I get your point, Brad, but at the same time, we, we've approved some pretty massive projects, VOPH, Connected City, Project Arthur, thousand, tens of thousands of units, gotta imagine that's gonna generate the need for at least a fire station or a police substation, yet we're approving them with no police substation or fire station. So, there is a disconnect there. I mean, Parks has a level of service, they make sure, VOPH is a good example, we have all these, we have Central Park laid out for VOPH, we've got schools laid out for VOPH, we've got a master utility plan for VOPH, we've got road, master roadway plan for VOPH, where's the fire station? Where's the substation? Because it's concerning, if they're saying, well, our plans only go this far out, we don't know, well, by the time all that's approved, then it's gonna be too late.
Too late.
They're not gonna have any.
Because you realize that with the fire department, it is a bricks and mortar facility that requires certain equipment to service a certain area. The sheriff's department, you know, they just need manpower, and I'm, and I have a reasonable relationship with the current sheriff, but I've never heard him say anything about, I need some more people, and there's a formula out there that they have for most law enforcement agencies, is that you need X amount of people for X amount of population, and that's just common, and he could, he sees twenty thousand people come in, he says, well, I need two more officers. And I know, I believe in this state, he's a constitutional officer, therefore he gets his money from the county, so he goes in for funding, but it would be kinda nice to know, at least for the commissioners, to know exactly how much money he may want to request, and it's a legitimate request.
And it helps him justify his budgetary...
It does, with manpower, sheriffs, with the, with the fire department, it's, it's a facility, and they need equipment, and especially with the ambulances, you know, some of us do live in an older community, where we have people, in my, my community, I hear it at least once or twice a week, if not more often. So, unfortunately, we're very close to a fire station house thirteen, just down the road, really. So, I'm, I'm really irritated, me every time for the last number of years that I've been a part of this body, that it's no comment, no concern, no issue. When I came from that, that particular endeavorment at one time in my life, I know there's a concern. Anyway, that's all I have to say on that subject.
Yeah, I think I was told once upon a time, there's like a three-year lead time from, you know, when they fund, or when they identify the need for a deputy, to when that deputy is actually on the road, uniformed, and serving the public, so...
One of the things that you have to understand now is, most of the law enforcement officials are, the road deputies are the police officers, they're given vehicles, and they don't have to go to a particular precinct. I know, at one time, I know, like in Hollaback Division, used to have all these cars come in, in Hollaback Division's, DCLA, and then the guys pick up their cars and go out. Today, just, you know, a code in, say I'm on particular duty, whatever, codes to that facility, so, they don't need the brick and mortar facilities, they can get their officers out there, but they need the manpower.
Well, they need to request the budget, right? So there's that process, and then hiring them, and then getting them onboard and trained and so forth, so... The other reason it affects land use decision is sometimes you get projects to come in here and they wanna convert commercial or industrial uses to residential. Well, which one has a higher demand for the sheriff, the residential uses or the commercial industrial businesses? And so, I don't know how they're taking that into account when they're commenting on land use decisions. You could argue, commercial industrial generates a higher tax base, which is gives them more money for deputies than residential does, but I don't know if the sheriff takes that into account when they're making comments on land use decisions.
And I think for that exact reason, we, we can't try to guess that for them, and we need, we're pretty much dependent on them to actually do that work, do their planning, and let us know. Fire is a little different, we, I know with the former chief, Kason, we, we worked very closely with him, he, he came out with some plans and some maps in some areas, and I know we've put a lot of new fire stations actually on the map recently because of that work, I know that's continuing with Chief Perez, so, I, you know, I, I think that those issues in general are, are being addressed, to the extent that they're commenting on us, they, I think they do have a plan, again, I can't speak to the details of their plan and, and how they go about that, and what triggers those things for them, they would need to make those comments, and if we don't get those, we can't, we can't represent that. But, they generally do happen, the, the stations come in when they're needed, there's some traffic issues, I know, we've, we've heard a few traffic issues, saying that they can't get from particular response time to a particular location because of other issues, it's usually interim condition, but, you know, those, those things are being looked at by the fire marshal's office as well, so, we see that at the site planning stage too downstream, so...
Yeah, well, the BSCC can compel the fire and rescue to, you know, because they're, they're not a constitutional, but obviously sheriff's office is constitutional, so...
Yeah.
But, you know, hopefully we, we don't have to compel anybody, just say, hey, we wanna work together and... You wanna subpoena the sheriff? Yeah, right? We wanna work together and say, hey, you know, can, can...
I think everybody's focused on solid... But yeah, those are, those are some difficult comments to get, and when we, when we bring it to you, we bring it with as, as much information as we possibly can at, at the time for you to try and make the decision, and then, you know, we can work with the board to see if we can encourage others to provide more information, or more detailed information, we'll give you whatever we can at the time.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, any other business to attend to?
That, that is, that is the end of the agenda.
Class dismissed? Okay, air motion?
Still moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay.